While there are four members in attendance, the Chair will announce they now have four members and go into official business of the work session. Jack, are you ready?
Okay.
Okay. Well, what we're gonna do tonight is we're gonna have a civil meeting. What's come about is I've been getting a lot of calls on the Neighborhood Preservation Committee, and back in March, I had some calls and complaints, and I addressed it with the county administration, and we really came to no resolve. And life goes on, you get busy, and then you, I got more complaints and more complaints. And so last Monday, Friday and Monday of last week, I got three calls in one day, and the complaints I thought were very severe complaints. So I directed my concerns towards the administration, and I think what the problem is, there's a breakdown between the county counties legislation, is it gonna be, is it legislation that the county council wrote and where those are true intentions? Is the policy getting misdirected? Is this proper procedure? And so what I did is I told, called the county administrator, told her the four cases that I was most concerned with, just to start. I don't wanna have, we're gonna, what, the way we're gonna do the meeting tonight is, the four people that I talked to, the four families that I have very deep concerns are, I'm gonna let them address the council. I told you guys to keep it respectful and keep it at a very minimum amount of time, and the council will be able to direct any kind of questions and ask you questions, and the administration will be able to ask you questions. I was hoping that everybody would be respectful of each other and not tell any mistruths and just be straightforward. Me and the administration had conversations about some of the things that was going on, and we were not able to agree on where this was, where we were going. So I thought it would be best to air our concerns and have conversation to see if this is the direction that this county council thought that that's where we were gonna go. And that's, that's, that's how the meeting will be run. We will, after we have some of the people in the public speak, we can talk about the county ordinances and what's in place. I'm not trying to fault anybody here, I'm just trying to come up with a solution on, if the county council thinks that some of the things that's been going on is what the legislation we passed, and I'm one of seven, I don't agree. But maybe there are some, maybe there's a happy medium, I don't know. But I'd like to start with Mr. Shaper on his condemnation and some of the things that went on with that, and then we got, we'll have three speakers after that. And these were the three cases that I did tell the administration about, so they will have, they're gonna have their pictures as well, which the county council just got their stuff 15 minutes ago, so we didn't have much time to look at it, but we'll have the conversation and we'll talk about procedures and we'll talk about where we're going with the county council. Mr. Shaper?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, dear.
It's absolutely, I think, essential that both sides be heard on this.
I agree.
Since we have the pictures and everything, wouldn't it be helpful for us to go first so, so everybody knows what we're talking about?
No, I would like Mr. Shaper to go first to explain his perspective and, and then the county-
Okay, does he have any pictures or can we put some stuff up?
You can put your pictures up if you want to.
Pictures up while he's talking to serve by knows that we're talking about.
You can put the house up there if you wanna start, but Mr. Shaper, go ahead and get started with what you wanna talk about.
First of all, I'd like to thank the county executive, county staff, and most importantly the council here for the, let me come before you. Two pieces of property I'd like to talk about, first is 2676 South Pointberry Road. This would be, this is not this piece of property here, this is a property that's currently in the state of Edmund Lindenbringer and his wife Darlene. Edmund passed away in 2005. This property is still owned by the family, six children, still have the property. Once again, this is not this property.
Do we have the right one?
No. No, this, but this is a family farm.
So just kind- Take that one down so people aren't confused.
Okay. 2676. Since Edmund passed away in 2005, the house has been, sometimes family members have lived there, is currently being rented. It's like the gift that keeps giving, seems like the family fixes up to one part, we come back in a short few months, and then there's something else. From moving vehicles to barns, it's currently an agricultural piece of property except for the house. It is, it is currently zoned agriculture. The next piece of property is 2804 South Pointberry, which is just around two corners. This property is currently owned and that was a piece of property that's up there. I would say the pictures look worse than the property, probably, but I guess my question is there, condemnation. This property was condemned. I went to the hearing, I received a notice, the letter was written, I'm thinking that Tuesday before New Year's, I got it on the Friday after New Year's, which New Year's being on a Thursday, said I had two days to fix it up on some, whatever I had to do there, and that it was condemned. Monday morning was the hearing, or else I was gonna face, I did have to fix up a thousand dollar a day fine. I came down to the meeting, wanted to ask some questions, wanted to find out the qualification of the person who condemned the piece of property. Let me go back here a little bit, I will say that, that I have had some help on this property. I do wanna thank Mr. Hefner, the lady that's up in the executive office that directed to me, to Mr. Hefner, as well as Mr. Morgan, who came out to the property. I do think we do have some resolve in this piece of property. However, here's my concern, if we're gonna send somebody out to condemn a piece of property, say that I need a structural engineer to deem it safe to be in, then I think that person should be qualified as a structural engineer to condemn a piece of property. It shouldn't be my burden if, if you say it is. Currently, that piece of property is being, or was being used by the New Valley Fire Department as a training facility. Since the condemnation, I've informed them that they cannot use the property. We do cut hay on that piece of property, the bottom is formed on that piece of property, it is agriculture, except the house and three acres, I presume, is residential. I do have two concerns there. As I expressed what the property was being used for, is, is being used by the fire department, the New Valley Fire District, and that, that it was being used for agriculture, I was questioning if that was a true and legitimate statement. That is a true and legitimate statement on that. It was being up to being condemned, it was in the hands of the New Valley Fire Department. It had had some vandalism, has since, the windows have since been boarded up. I do have 50 foot that I removed, the lock that you see on there, the key, the only key is by the New Valley Fire Department, they have the key. The front door, however, was busted in. I would be willing to ask any questions, answer any questions that you would have for us.
At the, at the hearing, did, did there, I guess what, I asked some questions, you don't have any copy of the meeting minutes of the hearing?
I do have copies of minutes from the meeting, yes.
You do have meeting minutes?
Yes, but I don't, they're very vague.
When I asked for the meeting minutes, I was, it says in my email here that there are, they don't keep meeting minutes of it.
Basically, it said discussion held, basically, on the issue.
So you got, because the, one of your biggest complaints was, was that you weren't able to ask questions in the hearing, that the person that you were asking questions was asked to leave the room?
That is correct, yes. And what I wanted to do was find out the qualification of the person who condemned the piece of property.
And I just, my, as my question as to the county is, when you say it's, the safe, the structure, it's on a farm, right? A family farm that you've had for quite-
This, this piece of property here, we've owned it maybe eight years.
But it's in your group of your land and your holdings that you have?
It borders my family's property, my wife's family's property, yes.
Right, so when it's, when the county deems it's unsafe, it's unsafe to who?
I presume it's unsafe for anybody entered a piece of property, or the house or the residence. However, I do think the fire department would have knowledge of a property being safe or not being safe.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Shaper?
I mean, I'm looking at some of these pictures, it, what, what is the plan for this? I mean, I'm looking at trees, looks like it's grown through the building.
You have to show me.
I don't know how to show you, but-
Since that is, Mrs. McIntyre asked me to clean that part up, that property has been cleaned up.
You got, you got, there was other things, you got wrote up for weeds are on the barbed wire fence, you got wrote up for trash, you got wrote up for, there's a whole litany of things, right?
Yes, and that's, that's all been cleared.
And so I guess my concern was when we started, started talking about a lot of this stuff, is, is the county writing up agriculture for the same, for trimming weeds under a barbed wire fence, it's just, I, I don't get that.
That, that must be on the 2676, there is no barbed wire fence at-
Or the fence, or whatever kind of fence it is, yeah.
It would be 2676.
Yeah. I guess those would be kinda my concerns on, 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 what is, what are the counties, do we want, if you're on a farm and it's an old farmhouse, are we gonna go out and condemn properties because they're unsafe? I, I don't agree with that at all, not at all. And that was one, now if the council agrees with that, that's a whole other story, but I don't agree with it at all. I don't think that the agricultural zoning should be upheld as the same standards as residential and commercial. And the processes, I think, are, are not quite accurate, how they, how they go about doing it. How many days' notice were you given and then how, when were you supposed to be at the-
On my first, it was two days, I believe.
Two days' notice for the hearing?
Yes, I, I think that's typical, but you would have to look at that first letter, but I believe it was two days.
Okay, did you-
Over holiday week.
I think just let Art go through the history of the thing.
Yeah, we'll go through the history on this one. Actually, there's four total separate cases. The hearings you're referring to are actually, those are abatement hearings. This was a rubbish abatement, a weed abatement, and a board up abatement. You had three separate cases there, then you had a condemnation case. The hearings there are a little bit quicker because obviously you're dealing with weeds, rubbish, and the board up of a unsecured structure. The process there, by ordinance, is five days and two days.
So how do you, so are we saying, let me just make sure I understand, are the ordinances the same for residential zoning as a farm property?
Well now, you're kinda connecting the two in a different sense.
Well, agriculture, when you say rubbish of agriculture, a farm, woods is gonna have rubbish everywhere, and who determines what's rubbish?
Well, the inspector make a determination, but just because it's agriculture use doesn't mean you get to keep tires on the property, stacked old tires.
Is that rubbish, though? Is that what you're referring to as rubbish?
Absolutely. Shingles, piles of shingles, if that's on a property, yes. In fact, if you get into a certain amount of tires, then DNR gets involved. In this case, on the weeds, what was relayed to Mr. Shaper in the hearing was-
Can I ask a question here?
Well, can I please, can I please answer some of these questions?
Sure.
What was brought into the hearing was, Mr. Shaper was asked to cut a 50-foot radius around the building so that he has access for the police and fire to get to the structure. And that was what was asked of Mr. Shaper in the hearing. And he was given additional time to take care of it. He was also asked to pick up the rubbish around the exterior of the property, and was asked to secure the structure. He indicated at that time that he wanted to, he was trying to sell the property, he's been trying to sell it for the last five years. And we didn't ask him to paint the board up like we typically is required by ordinance, we asked him to just secure it, take care of it, and we'll give an extension to spring to summer to hopefully can sell it or make a decision on what he wants to do with the structure. And that's where we left it at that point.
When you say by ordinance, what ordinance says that he has to cut weeds 50 feet around the base of his property in agriculture?
Actually, it's 10 inches, the limit is 10 inches.
In agriculture?
Around the structure.
And, and, okay, and so in agriculture, we have that in an ordinance?
Yes, no, we don't have that in our ordinance. That's where we treat agricultural property differently than residential. On a residential piece of property, you have to keep the whole site clean and clear according to code. With agricultural, we know that you're going to have corn planted and just other things going on in the site that you would totally expect to find on a farm. So what we've done in applying the ordinance to agricultural property is this area around the principal structures.
Wayne, what is, what is the principal structure zone?
What is it zone?
Yeah.
Oh, in this case, it's agricultural.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify, the ordinances are the same, no matter what your zone, but we apply them with a little discretion when it comes to agricultural.
Okay, we got, we got three other people, I just-
People at Art. Were you finished, Art?
Do you want, are we gonna, let's not get into great, great detail, I mean, I wanna give you the opportunity to respond, but I, I wanna, we got four, two other-
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask Art one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, there was some suggestion here about treating houses and barns with the same, the same standard. We don't apply the same standard. What we look for is whether it's safe or not.
Yes.
Obviously, a barn doesn't have to be as safe as a, as a home.
Correct.
But that's a different standard.
Yes, still has to be structurally sound.
Okay.
Okay, when you say-
And what about, maybe this reply, because I thought that was one of the better suggestions here. The way it is right now, we can put the burden of proof on them?
It's up to the-
I mean, do we send somebody out there that knows it's structurally unsound, or we just suspect it is, and then put the burden on them to show that it isn't?
Well, it's first based on a visual observation, they don't do structural calculations and go out and check the, you know, the integrity of the structure internally, or all the posts and everything. The owner has the opportunity to either remove the structure or repair the structure. If they wanna repair the structure, then depending on the condition, then they would get a building permit through the building department, they would bring in a structural engineer to make the repairs, depending on the condition.
What if they just, what if they just debate your, your finding that it's structurally unsound?
Well, they could come and see me and we-
And you have, you talk about it.
We'd go out and take a look at it, yes.
So was at the hearing, are you the one that's running the hearing?
Yes, on the abatement hearings, I handle all those.
So you're writing the tickets and then you're the judge of the hearing in the sort of speaker?
No, the inspectors, inspectors issue.
Okay, so on, on any particular property or this one, I mean, we got other connotations I wanna talk about, but who, or when you say unsafe, unsafe for who?
Unsafe for the public, the inspector's-
But why would the public be on someone else's property?
Well, actually, unsafe for human occupation depends, I'm sorry, let me retrain, public. It depends as far as what the structure is condemned under. If it's 108.3, then the structure's unsafe for human habitation, so they couldn't go in there for, for living there.
But if there's cattle, well, we'll get it, we'll get into this later, okay. Any other questions for Mr. Shaper?
Just if I could make some closing comments or answer any questions, I mean, I would have a million of those.
I just had a question, is this on a public road?
Yes, and that, that was another of my concern. This house, that's about five foot off the pavement, the chimney is about five foot off the pavement. And my first concern was, is the county looking to widen that road, and if we condemn the property, then, then it's easier to widen the road on the corner.
Mr. Joe?
And I would like to say, these pictures, these pictures that you have up here today do not reflect the condition of the property. Any of the abatements, and I think the gentleman would agree, have been done and have been signed off on. But my, my concern here is the condemnation of the piece of property. I have to November to destroy this piece of property or bringing it up to the code. One of the things that was shown on the picture was, because it does not have electrical service to the property, does make it condemnable, is what I've been told.
Let's, let's answer that question.
You can't occupy it, can't live in the house, can't live in the house solely.
If it doesn't have electric, is that a reason to condemn it?
Yes, you could condemn it because it doesn't have electric, doesn't have water, then a person could not occupy it.
So what about, like, for instance, the farmhouse that the county bought, like Roma Sick, or did we condemn those?
I'm not familiar with those.
With the old houses, the old farm sets we bought that we restored like five years down the road when we got money, did we condemn those houses when they had no electric?
I'm not familiar.
Like the Parsons House or those old houses?
Yeah, Joe, I'm not familiar with those.
Question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So what, go, I think it'd be helpful here to go through the whole process. We can't, we can't, no, but we can't condemn anything without a judge agreeing to it, correct?
I think there's a confusion between condemn and demolition, if you're thinking demolition, that's completely separate. Condemn, there's-
Condemn means nobody can live in it.
Just means you can't live it for a certain reason, either because it doesn't have power, it's unsafe because of unsanitary conditions, could be unsafe because of structural reasons, could be unsafe it was used for a meth lab, chemical reasons. That just means you cannot live and occupy that structure. Doesn't mean the house is being torn out. Now, there is within the, within the ordinance and the notices, which are standard form letters, that by ordinance, within one year after being condemned, you need to do some of the structure, or the county may demolish the structure. That's in every ordinance.
So Dale, what you're saying is your house was condemned, if you don't do anything with it in a year, it's gonna be demolished, if you don't demolish it, the county does it, they put it on your property.
No, it can be, doesn't say it's void of debate.
Maybe, but, but it's discretion of the county.
No, that's why I need to know, and what is the process? Isn't there a judge that has to agree with us?
Eventually, you have to go through a hearing, there's a long process.
And if you don't like the county's judge, you can appeal it to the circuit court, circuit judge. So we have to go ahead, if we, if we have a case for any of this, we have to be able to convince a judge that it follows the ordinances and we can't just do it on our own.
Not our demolition proceeding, actually, it's not until they can appeal it to a court.
Right.
There's hearing processes and notices we have to follow, but then there's the hearing, that's a formal hearing, which we have our attorneys present, and then we have a formal hearing after so many days' notice, and then I review those cases.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the demolition here, or condemnation hearing, that all goes before the building official. One of the problems I'm seeing here, though, is I don't know that the property should be condemned, they should be posted uninhabitable, which is a big difference. If it's condemned, it's gonna end up, you might, somewhere down the road, like you said, a year, they could start demolition proceedings on it, and that's done by the building official. What it should be posted is uninhabitable. And I have a similar case where a gentleman had a mobile home and they cut off the water or he had a water leak, and they condemned the mobile home. Well, it shouldn't have been condemned, it should have been posted uninhabitable till they got water restored in it. Not only was it condemned, they went inside and inspected it and made him bring everything up on the inside of the building, the mobile home, up to current code standards. And I, I don't know what the reasoning for going into the gentleman's house or what, but he had to get a, he had to get a heating cooling contractor certify his furnace and water heater, which were fine. He had to get a structural engineer to come out and certify his mobile home, which, if they wouldn't even gone in there, that would have never even happened. And, and the structural engineer said there was nothing wrong with the structure, but the-
I disagree with that, if I may answer that, the structural engineer made him change the subfloor because it was in the wrong direction, and it had a problem with wind load, so it wouldn't withstand a wind load, an inline wind load.
But why is the county putting that burden on people if they choose to live in a house that's, I mean, if he's, the electric was turned off, even for him and those other cases where you say get a structural engineer to look at it, say it's unsafe, why don't you get a structural engineer to prove that it's unsafe? I mean, why would we put the burden on the person, especially when you're talking about agricultural property that if anybody's on an old barn or an old house they're trespassing? I don't get that. But, but let's move on to the week. I wanna move on to the next person.
Thank you. Once again, I would like to say, though, we are trying to work a situation, Mr. Hefner's been very good to work with, as well as Mr. Morgan, to get to where a point where maybe we're not looking at this, for the example, as uninhabitable and not condemned, would be a workable submission. Thank you very much.
Ernie, you wanna come up here? Ernie's another condemnation that happened a couple weeks ago.
Why we're waiting for him to come up? I think it's important, though, if, if somebody's gonna make a determination if a building structure is unsound, I think it should be a building inspector that goes out there rather than somebody, a neighborhood preservation inspector, because the building inspector's gonna have more knowledge of structural components of a, of a structure.
Is that how we do it, Art?
No, our inspectors make, neighborhood preservation inspectors make the determination.
Rather than the building, those people?
All right, Mr. Catrick, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for giving me a chance to get this off my chest because it's been kinda driving on me a little bit here. Ernie Catrick's my name, 20, well, right at 30 years ago, we bought this house and five acres at the corner of Orphan and Duello, and raised a family there, kids, neighbor kids, everybody else. Give you a little background, then about eight years ago, we had a small house fire that smoked up one end of the house, and it was in the basement on, on one end. Well, we were getting ready to fix it, and there was a developer that had been wanting to buy it, that was right in the big, everybody, you know, we're buying property as fast as they can to build on, and actually, he come, took me and my wife out to lunch and says, look, don't fix it, I'm getting this all together, I'm gonna buy it. Okay, we had another piece of property that we'd bought out between Jonesburg and Bellflower, so we moved everything that we could out there, because even to fix it, we needed to get the furniture out so we could repaint and stuff inside. And after, right after that, we got moved out, and he's dragging us on for, he ended up dragging us along for a couple of years. In the meantime, my parents got sick down in Florida, and I told them that I'd never put them in a home long as I was able to look after them. So I went down, got them, brought them up here, my wife's a physician assistant, and we, for the last eight years, I've looked after them 24/7. I couldn't, you know, anytime I left, I had to get somebody to, to watch them, whatever. Okay, that out of the way, you got a little history on it. And there's some other things, but we're, we're short on time. And normally, I don't do notes, but there's so much here and so many dates that I felt like I had to, to make sure I got everything straight. Friday, March 27th, I wasn't aware of none of this, there was two notices of rubbish abatement and a weed abatement posted on the door of a vacant house, okay? We, then March 30th, there were two more postings, one condemnation and one abatement, something abatement, a board up abatement. Didn't know anything about them. Wednesday, April 1st, my son, he works over in Illinois for Worldwide, and he, he got a call from a neighbor across the street that kinda looks after the place for us, as always, always have, that there were some notices on the door. I happened to be watching my grandson that day, he's sick and couldn't go to the babysitter, I happened to be watching my grandson that day, he's sick and couldn't go to the babysitter, so, and he lives over right behind Timberland, not too far away. I said, stop by and get him. He stopped by and got him. I read them. It, you know, here, it's posted on a Friday afternoon, and to do this menagerie of stuff and have it done by Monday morning because there's a hearing at 8:30. I didn't know anything about it until Wednesday. Thursday, when I get this stuff in the mail. They mail it on Friday, mail don't run over the weekend, it never got out of St. Charles. It's got to get over to Montgomery County, and I didn't get it until Thursday. Then I was aware of it. I called down, got a meeting with Mr. Art there. I went in at a, I didn't understand, you know, what, all, I mean, there was, if you look at the letter, you can see that the, a pole, a light pole's crooked, there's a bird nest behind the light, behind the door. And the, the house of windows are busted all in the house. Well, I knew they wasn't because I'd just been there. The windows wasn't all busted out, now there was one window. And if he wants to put it up, well, see, that picture is so out of whack. I mean, he catches it, this was not, when was the date on that picture?
2013.
2013?
The cases go from 2009 to 2013.
All of it's been put to rest, hasn't it?
No, I said, I just, it's a series of pictures for all the cases.
Okay, that's what I had to squatter.
He had seventeen cases over that period of time.
Well, anyway, the pictures that he's showing are back while I was looking after my mom, my mom and dad, I let a guy use the barn and it become a squatter. I couldn't get him out of there. I know y'all had problems with him, I had problems with him. Finally, I turned the electricity off to get him to leave. Then I got a dumpster, I cleaned everything up, like y'all said, correct?
I'd have to look back at the case file, this is the broken window, I was trying to find that window for you.
Okay.
That's the other one.
That's the one busted window right there, that's a dual pane pella window. What constitutes a busted window? One pane or both panes? It's still got one pane on the inside, so it's still a window, still, there can't nobody crawl through it unless they busted the other side of it. And, see, this is from, when is the date on this?
These are in 2015. These are, these are this year.
Okay. So I went to the meeting with Art, and I told him what my concerns were, said his facts were not straight. And he says, well, just let me send the contractor out there, if you don't do it, I'll send the contractor out and I'll get it done. I says, no, I can't afford that, you know, this, I can't afford, I'll do what you want done. They wanted my fence tore down, which I'd built thirty years ago, and I've got pictures here.
Can you address that one?
This building's not even there anymore.
Yeah, that building's gone, a tree fell on that, you know, you're just picking out what you want to pick out, buddy.
These are the 2015 pictures, I'm putting up the 2015 pictures, if you want a different picture.
That can't be 2015.
You want me to put up the pictures?
Well, it was...
Sorry.
Was that building's gone?
Yeah, that building, we're talking about now. That building is...
What we're talking about, Ernie, is you had some concerns in 2013, you addressed those concerns, you're talking about within the last couple of months, that's what we're talking about right now.
Right, I'm going through the date thing. He said he'd send Connie McIntyre out on Monday to verify, to clarify all the problems that she found. Okay. I was there on Monday, and I've got minutes from that meeting that said that Connie would be out. Instead, Mr. Art and another fellow shows up. Okay, there, he gets out, he goes looking around, he says, where's the key? I said, my son's got it, he showed it to some people interested in buying it over the weekend, well, where's it at? I said, he works over in Edwards River for Worldwide, he says, well, can you call him and get him to bring it over here? I says, I think not, on Friday afternoon at close to 3 o'clock. I says, what do you need to go in the house for anyway? I just use it for storage, because we couldn't move everything that we had, that we, over twenty something years, out of there when we moved. So we, there's clothes in there, there's couches in there, there's dishwasher, microwave, you know, everything's in there. Well, after we walked around, he went down to my barn, wanted me to tear it down because it was leaking around the skylight, or take, pull a tear of roof off and redo the whole roof, and just this, that, and the other, and finally, he told the guy to leave, the other guy left, and he sat around a while, and just the whole time, just, let me just send the contractor out, let me send the contractor out. And I kept saying, no, I can't afford a contractor, tell me what to do. Well, here we go, after April the 7th, this was after I met with him. April the 7th, my neighbor Mark Fisher called and said that there was a guy that was buying his property, would I be interested in selling mine? I said, sure. He said, can I give you my number? I said, yeah. Next day, the guy called, I thought his name was Tim Griffey, he's a builder out around New Melli. He met me at the property, we discussed it, he made me a fair offer on it, we wrote a contract right there on his truck, I signed it, carried it home, my wife signed it. I told him the problems I was having with the county. He says, okay, he says, I know Connie, he says, I built her house. He says, let me call her tomorrow, he says, this is just a waste of money for you to, you know, board this thing up and tear this deck off and tear down your fence and all this, because I'm going to do it all anyway. Okay? Next day, he calls me, he says, Ernie, he says, I talked to Connie and she said that we didn't have to board up the house, that we could, she wanted the building gone, which she showed a picture of that the tree fell on. He wanted it gone, he wanted the fence out the window, he wanted the deck tore off the back of the house. I questioned about how am I going to tear the deck off the back of the house, he says, oh, just get a high lift or something and just rip it off the back. Well, that's what we did, did what the man said to do. Then, the next day, I called Tim back, it was a Friday, and said, are you sure that, you know, what Connie told you? I'm sure, I said, I took notes, and he read them to me off his pad. Said, okay, that Saturday, I hired a guy, I probably spent $1,500 or more getting all this stuff tore up, tore down like he wanted it. Well, saving grace, the boards that was on the fence, were 25-year-old, 12-foot-long boards, it was, none of them were rotten, some of them were busted off, and my son put, and there was some old wood gates there around the barn, he put them on Buy, Sell and Trade, and shoot, people lit up wanting to buy them. Well, after three or four folks showed up wanting them, we figured we'd sell them too cheap. So, so then we decided we'd take them and just let the guy that's tearing the fence down what he didn't bust up, to put them in a pile, and we sort through them and then get some good money for them, we had to pay for all this going on anyway. So, we did that, and got everything, you know, to, about, you know, about done, and then, but we didn't board the house up, because Connie had told Tim we didn't have to board the house up. Well, this is just me hiring the guy, and then the following, April 14th, Tim, out of the goodness of his heart, my lawnmower was in the shop, he sends a guy over and mows the property for me. You know, mows, mows everything, and, you know, it's, I thanked him, he wouldn't take a dime for it. And, then we go to April 17th, I know I'm kind of jumping around, but I'm trying to do this as fast as I can as do y'all make sense of it. April 17th, I met with me, my wife, she took off half a day, and my son-in-law, Joe Bowers, we met Connie out there. This was after we'd done, took everything, I've got pictures right here to show them all if you want to see it, how it looks now. And we met her out there, and she told me, with my son-in-law standing right on my, we standing at the end of the house, she says, you need to put a board in that, when the firemen came out, they busted one of the basement windows, it was a block glass window, you know, just regular size, somebody couldn't get through it if they had to. Number two, it was down in a window well, two foot in the ground, so ain't nobody getting through it, and she, you need, you got to board that up. I said, okay, I'll get that done. Well, she went, she went talking to my wife, and just nitpicked this, that, that cup's got to be picked up, that can's got to be picked up, just, you know, it felt like we're little school kids being lectured to. Well, she left, and then in the meantime, April the 20th or 21st, I called out, it said on the paper, I might need to get, talk to the building department, because I already had said something about taking the electricity down from the transformer to the pole at the house. And I couldn't figure out why, I mean, it'd been there, it wasn't no problem there. So I called the building department, I got, I talked to Rick, to Mick or Rocky, one of them, I don't know exactly which one, but they're nice guys, I told them what was going on, they says, well, you need to get a demo permit. And come down and get a demo permit, and that will throw it, you know, that'll give you some time and you don't have to... I said, well, that's good to know, I didn't spend all this money, but, you know, still, I'll... So I went down, it's about sixty mile drive for me, I drove down on Friday, the 23rd, and I picked up paperwork. Well, it's a fall...
23rd of which, this month?
Of April.
Uh huh. Then the 28th of April, I went, me and the neighbor went down, I was going to mow, I got my lawnmower, I had to shop, and we was going to sort through them boards that were just piled up, which I can show you all this. I imagine you can too, your take on it. And I went down, well, to my, to my despair, when we unloaded the lawnmower, I dropped the steel ramp right on my toe, busted the fire out of it. Actually, I lost my religion for a little while, had to lay it on the stump because it hurt. I, so I hobbled around there, get the mowing done, get all the mowing done, but I wasn't no way I was going to sort through them boards, so we loaded back up, went to the house. I was up all night with that toe just to thrive. If you ain't never mashed your toe, you don't know how long that thing's a throb, and it'll keep you up all night long. Well, about, my wife went to work at 7:30, she had to make rounds down to St. Joe's, I think, that day, and I, at 6:30, I finally got off to sleep. Phone rings at 7 o'clock, it's Connie, Connie McIntyre. She says, Ernie, so you need to mow down there. I says, what? I says, I just mowed down there. No, you didn't. I says, Connie, I mowed down there yesterday. Well, you need to pick up all them boards off the ground and all this other stuff and put, and put a board in that window. Now, why would she keep telling me to put a board in this window if I needed to board up this house? And she didn't tell Griffey that. All of a sudden, she denies any of this a little later on in this escapade. And we, I'm sorry if I stumbled a little bit, but there's so much going through my mind, it's hard to keep it all, to keep it all straight. She, she said, well, you got to get that done, she says, or, I'm going to send the contractor out there to hear this contractor stuff goes again, and get it done. I said, Connie, in good faith, I have been working my butt off as hard as I can to get all this stuff that y'all said to get done, done. Well, that, I guess that wasn't good enough. And I did, I'll admit to this, I mean, she just kept on me and on me, and this about the contractor, finally, I said, you know, I ain't in a good mood at all, but they'd never seen that side of me. I've always been, you know, tried to be nice and accommodating and do anything that I could do to please these people. I've raised that away, I don't like confrontation, and I hate being up here right now, having to lay this out like I am, but it needs to be done. I did say, you know, she, I says, Connie, look, you just do whatever you think you got to do. I says, I'm doing the best I can do to get this done. And, okay, I went and we continued, I think I mowed one, the, okay, this is Connie needing to mow, dah dah dah, I told her I'd get back down there ASAP. I didn't know what she wanted to know exactly when I was going to get back down there, I says, as soon as I can walk, good. I says, you know, I can't tell you how long this thing's going to be for, I just now today have been able to get my boot on, and that was three weeks ago. And we go now to May the 6th, it's on a Wednesday. Wednesday, my wife's off, so me, my wife, my son, he took a half a day off, we worked down there, I mowed that place just as low as that old husky I got them up. I went and took round up and all the horse weeds I could find, which ain't outgrow any mower, two to one. You know, you're going to have him go like that, where grass don't go like that. I took round up and I told him that's prayer all over here, and I sprayed every one of them I could find, got them all sprayed down good. Then me and the son, I let a church group, his church group every year, put a community garden in there. And so they come out and helped us with the demolition stuff, so we got my tiller out and we tilled up the garden, and we were all standing there when we got done, it's about 6:00, they were feeling good about it, you know, hey, this is a good thing. Well, Thursday, May the 8th, between 5:30 and 6 o'clock, I get a phone call from my son. He says, it's his words, he says, Dad, I'm at the old house, it's boarded up, I can't get in, even the garage is boarded up, all my wood's gone. I don't, and I don't know what all else is gone. Well, I just started getting a little mad at that point in time. Like I said, I've been mad twice in my life, and this was the second time. And he asked me, he said, Dad, he says, what's wrong with these people? We've worked so hard to do what they wanted done, what's wrong with them? I says, I says, son, I'm devastated, I don't know, I don't know, I just beside myself. It was too late to call anybody, I don't know who to call, here I got stuff missing, So I couldn't sleep, you know how...
So, so they moved along a little bit, so they, they took all your old boards, according to your...
At this time, okay, this is the important part right here. You know, I just, you know the feelings you get when you feel like you've just been betrayed, you know, I just tore up, I stayed out by a road and tumbled, was mad, was happy, was everything, everything in the world went through my mind that night. The next morning at 8 o'clock, I'm down at Charles' office. Well, Art was on vacation, I did raise my voice, I won't, I won't say I didn't, but I thought I had reason to. Here, I'd done what I had tried to do what they wanted done, did it in good faith, and they send people out there, trespass on my property, bored my house up, which I can't even get in now. And I've got stuff stored in it, because I said that to Art when he was talking that, I says, look, I got stuff stored in there, how am I going to get to it if I bored all this up? He never answered me, like, he wasn't concerned about that, you remember that? He wasn't concerned about that, were you?
No, that wasn't the way the conversation went.
Okay, that's right. And, then, well, he happened to be on vacation, and I was asked to leave, so I left, went back to the house, called Connie, I calmed down a little bit, called her. I says, look, I want to know one thing, tell me what law y'all used to trespass, send somebody onto my property, haul off my, my possessions? I had a dumpster sitting right there full of junk, anything else wasn't junk, to haul off my possessions, board perfectly good pella windows up, and I said, what, what law did you use to do that? Well, you got to talk to Art. I says, well, I says, can you do me one favor? If, before you send anybody else to my property to trespass or haul anything off or do anything else, will you please have the common courtesy to notify me? I said, do you let people go on your property, would you not be in there and do work unless you know them personally? She says, no. I says, well, what difference is it with me? I should be notified before somebody goes on my property to take my, my possessions off of it, essentially steal them. And I got a list of about everything they took, and she said, okay, she would. Well, I felt a little bit, I hear, I made no mistake, I listened to her, listened to them again. Well, Monday, the 11th, it was raining. May the 12th, get another call from my son, Dad, they've been back, they've got all our firewood, they've got the fence, they got a roll of, they got hog pounds, they got the gates, you know, and I don't know what else. And I just, I threw my hands up, and, you know, you can't even, you know, trust what they tell you they'll do in common. This ain't a witch hunt for me, it's just the facts, it's how it was presented, which is wrong. I mean, I deem it wrong, and if anybody in here don't deem somebody coming on your property like that, if they don't deem it wrong, they don't live in the... don't deem it wrong, they don't live in the country that I've been raised up in. Well, I didn't have any other choice. I went down, because Art wasn't gonna be back till Thursday, over a week from the time this whole thing happened. So I go talk to an attorney. Attorney calls and I called somebody down there and he says, well, they told me they didn't remove any of your property unless it was in disrepair. Well, I wanna know where we draw the line. What is deemed disrepair to one, in disrepair to one person, it necessarily disrepair to another person. I was taught if, if it broke, fix it. If it broke again, fix it. When you get where you can't break it, save it for parts. That's the way I was brought up, you know, and, and I know that law enforcement, you have to get a judge to sign a warrant before you can go on somebody's property and search it. And if you take anything off of it, you gotta tag it and keep what puts these people above the law of what a judge says, you know? And there's no judge, I didn't get no certified letters or nothing else, it just happened to me. And I, I don't know how many other people in here has had stuff like that happen to them, but I'm sure a few of y'all in here because it did happen to you. And it just, you know, I don't know where, what happened to small government, far the people, smaller government, far the people. That's what I, I was raised on. Lease government, let the people control. And this is zoned agricultural, by the way.
Uh, um, can I have some questions? Are you, are you, you got more?
No, go ahead. Oh, I could, I mean, I could, I skipped a bunch.
Here's, for the sake of time, I got some questions. Um, I called you guys on this one and, um, I, 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 the pictures, like Ernie said, I mean, those are older pictures, but, but just to talk about some procedures here, was Ernie, Mr. Katrik, was he notified or was he just getting stickers put on his door?
No, they're notified.
That's absolutely...
Huh?
How was he notified?
They're sent off mail and actually met Mr. Katrik at the property, walked through exactly what needs to be done.
All right, Ernie, go, go back up there and then we'll ask you some questions.
Okay. Now, I started at the back, in the very back picture, is my, my son's church garden from last year. And then everything else is, as this thing progressed forward to the, so you saw all views of the house to the last one before they, uh, boarded it up.
Okay, just, just some questions, I got some questions on procedures. Um, Art, what, what, how does, for this gentleman here, you could argue that it's a mess and everything else and all that, okay? But where in our ordinances does it give the county the authority to go out into his shed and clean his sheds out?
They don't clean the sheds out. It's property on the...
And then, tear it down at the shed, and so we have, I had my, I had to take my firewood out of the shed that I had under it, set it next to it, and then we were selling it, you know, but my firewood was hidden, I mean...
And it was behind the commercial dumpster, it couldn't even be seen.
It couldn't even be seen from the road, not, did not, is it, can you store firewood outside of St. Charles County?
Yes.
Connie's told me you can't. She's had me move that pile of firewood all over...
I'm not gonna go in, he said, she said, because you said a lot of stuff here and I was there and that was not what was said. So I'm not gonna go in the back and forth of what she might've told you. I know exactly what I told you when I was there and that's not what I said to you.
Ernie, Ernie, let's not do, let's just keep it controlled, go ahead.
I mean, he asked a good question, under what authority was this done? Can we let, uh, answer that?
What is it?
They don't go inside the structures, there's an abatement proceeding, is that rubbish abatement proceeding? There's also the weed...
But you're the judge and juror, you're writing the tickets and then he comes to the hearing and you determine whether or not it's valid or not, is that right?
The inspector does, but then, yes, I review it.
But the inspectors work for you.
Absolutely, yes, they do. Yes.
Well, what, if, if you don't go in the house, the house might...
That's, that's set up for years.
When Connie asked me that day, the window up...
Hold on, Ernie. Ernie, hold on, hold on now. But that's another thing, we get into the ordinances, I was asking, can we, do we find the ordinances that we ever pass that gives them that authority?
Well, they were, they're looked into.
Do a big ol', is that the property management thing that nobody can even understand? Is that the one we're talking about?
Audio.
Huh?
It's property maintenance code.
Property maintenance code.
Which was passed, when was that passed?
Well, you've had it...
That was like a five-hundred page, but it, it's so unclear. I got the thing, it's, it doesn't give you the authority, it's, it gives you discretion, which is way too much authority to begin with, but I, I, what I'm confused is, is why they went on his, took, took his oak bards? If you know anything about country lumber, it's expensive and they took that, they took stuff outside. He called the contractor, who supposedly took the stuff, the contractor will not return his phone calls to get him his stuff back, is that right?
That's right.
Let's let him address all those issues.
First of all, without seeing the pictures of what was out there, what was taken, you're jumping to conclusion that that's exactly what happened. And sometimes, as you can see, it's not what happens. You have to look at the pictures, we have to go back, look at the case file and look through it. But before I jump to conclusion, I'm sorry, what was the next question?
Just go through, go through, go through what happened on the case.
On the typical case, uh, this one, it looks like we had, you had a rubbish abatement case. It actually was initiated, looked like back on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen. Then there's a hearing, spoke with the owner on April second. On March thirty-first, there's an abatement hearing, posted on property. Uh, then we scheduled a meeting to meet with you, you contacted me, we went out and met on April sixth.
You, you, you posted on the thirty, on the thirty-first, you posted on his door?
Uh, they posted minutes and they mailed them too.
Okay, and then what, one, that was the thirty-first, that was, and then when was the meeting supposed to be?
Uh, those were actually the minutes of the meeting, the minutes of the hearing.
How come, I asked for the, okay, how come there's meeting minutes for that hearing, but there wasn't meeting minutes for Mr. Shaper's hearing?
There's minutes for those.
I got the email right here, Art, I asked for the meeting minutes of that meeting and you said you don't have meeting minutes. It says, on December hearing, it is recorded in the minutes what exactly was said to Mr. Janassi. No tape recording is made, there were informal hearings on weeds, rubbish and board abatement, these are less formal and clerical staffs. I wanted to know what the meeting minutes were. You said that they don't have meeting minutes.
Your question was there, are they recorded and are they formal minutes? No, they don't do a verbatim minutes. What they are, they're, they're less, basically what was the discussion? It's not a word for word, just like a demo hearing, demo hearing, everything is recorded. You have every word that was said on those.
Okay. Come on, guys.
He didn't interrupt you.
Hold on, hold on, Ernie, hold on, Wayne, hold on, guys, come on, hold on, let's not go there, let's keep it civil.
I plan not to.
No, I understand, I, I just, some of these things, I mean, we, we can, you can go tit for tat, I just, I just don't know, I think some of these things are very unclear.
Well, it's time for tat.
Well, what, what, okay, go ahead, what, do the format.
Just go through the case, Art, I mean... Well, you have, we go back to, you just had the minutes on the third, thirty-first, March thirty-first, uh, April sixth, went out and met with him, went over each item with him, went over the structures, what he can do, what he can't do, what it would take, went over exactly what needed to be removed, what needed to be cut, he wanted to keep some stuff, and well, if you wanna keep it, you gotta put it in the barn, that's fine.
Set the garage, I put it in the garage and you boarded up the garage.
Art, Ernie, Ernie, let him finish it in.
So then we proceeded, uh, potential buyer contacted us on April ninth, uh, it was, left a message with the owner, talked about it. The inspector went out again, met with the owner on April seventeenth, which was the extension I gave him, they have everything completed by them, which was to cut the grass, get all the rubbish out of there and then board up the structure. Uh, apparently that was not completed, so they sent out the inspector on, or they sent out the contractor, it looks like, uh, April twenty-ninth, and then there was a lien filed on May fourteenth.
A lien. Don't say in your paperwork that I'll be billed direct?
Yeah, you're gonna send a bill, you're gonna send a bill if you don't pay the work here.
Well, if you don't file a lien, and I hadn't even, never got a bill yet.
It's called a lien paperwork, essentially it is a bill, you have so many days to pay the bill if it's, if you don't pay the bill.
Well, I think the bill should, I mean, I, I, I didn't, I don't think you should send a contractor out anyway. I was doing the best I could do in, as faithful as I could be.
Art, Ernie, let's, uh, we're gonna move on to one more, we got two more to people that just want to draw. I guess the thing is, is we gotta figure out, this council has to figure out if we actually wrote ordinances in place to allow this kind of authority, which I don't ever agree that we did, and if we did...
Actually, you reduced it. It was a two-year time period for the demolition, you reduced it down to one year for the demolition. This was part and it was brought up in a specific meeting.
Is that in the UDO, changes it with like six hundred pages?
No, that was in, that was in the property maintenance code.
All right, well, then we're...
One of the arguments was brought up to me was, two years is too long to wait to tear down these structures and the floodplain and all these other structures like the meth lamps and everything else, you wanted to reduce it down to one year.
We never started going out into agricultural farms, tearing down barns and condemning barns because they're old, we never did that. We condemned, do you guys know that St. Charles County condemned a hundred and fifty-three homes in two years, where St. Louis County only condemned two in the rural, in the rural area? Why is that?
I don't know what they condemned.
That's why they look for it, they do. You want an answer?
Yeah, I do.
Because they've been doing that for the last fifty years and, and we've only been doing it since we became a charter county.
Well, I guess this county's gotta decide whether or not we're gonna infringe on people's property rights or not, I mean, that's, that's where it stands.
What about my personal property that was filed off?
Well, Art, would you address all those things or not?
He had, he had a tiller, he had toolboxes, he had stuff that was missing and he...
We would have to look at the pictures, but if you had something that was broken and pieces, yes, they're gonna remove it. If you have tires...
I just used it the day before, I just cut the grass the day before and y'all come in and cut the grass again. They charged me for it.
There will be pictures in the file, each time they're out there.
There's a picture in there, Art, I cut the grass, the lawnmower's sitting there. The next...
Are you saying they took the lawnmower?
No, I got the lawnmower, hauled it back home, but I left the tiller in the barn and it was gone with it. They said they didn't take it. Well, nobody else has been there, nobody else sent anybody out, common sense says, well, these people were there, somebody directed them to haul off my wood, haul off my firewood and everything else. So, Lockit just tells me, well, they decided they wanted a tiller too and a toolbox. And a roll thing that picks up nails, that I used to pick the nails, like we burnt stuff. And it's probably two hundred dollars, it's a commercial roofing, it's gone. So, you know, I lose all the way around.
All right, um... So who went out there, Art?
That would've been the contractor.
Who was the contractor?
I'd have to see, we have two different contractors we use.
How come though they don't return his phone calls?
I don't know. We hire a contractor. We're not there to dictate as far as whether return calls are not returned.
I have two questions.
Sure.
Was this, all this investigation, all this stuff, based, was this based on a complaint or a drive-by? Okay? Because I think that matters.
On these two thousand and fifteen cases, these are initiated, inspector-initiated cases.
So the inspector, inspector's driving, the neighborhood decided, neighbors weren't complaining?
Actually, this one is on a routine check because we have seventeen cases since two thousand and nine, so part of the reoccurring are repeat offenders, they're supposed, inspectors are supposed to go out and check it.
Okay. My second thing, I wanna, I've, I've dealt with some properties of this, when I used to own rental property, when you see a man, a gentleman like that man making a good faith effort and he can't get everything done in thirty days, but he's progressing, is it typical that you give extensions to that? Because most municipalities in this county do.
Typically, the inspectors do give extensions, continuances.
Okay.
Uh, what to talk about real quick, is Alan or Jacob Schwedie here?
Yes.
You guys gonna come up here real quick? This, uh, this concerns me, this, come on up, Alan, you can just stand right up there.
Hello, this is my brother Dennis and this is my son Jacob.
Okay, thanks for coming, guys. Um, this, I heard this, Jacob was on Facebook and my wife told me about this and I just couldn't believe it, and so, uh, I called him a couple of times and, and wanted to find out if it were true. So here's my concern on this one. Um, they've, Schwedie family, Schwedie Road, they've been out there for a long, long time. They got a barn, what, your great-grandfather built or something like that? And, uh, so it's a rough barn, no doubt about it, but it's on their property and they, they've been farming out there for a long, long time. And, uh, it's like the landscape in rural, rural America, you got old barns, you got old structures, they fall down, you leave them alone, and that's it. And the, the problem I have with this is, uh, I did call the county on this, tried to talk to them about it, and, um, they think that they should do this, they should condemn barns and tell them to tear them down, and, and I, I don't agree with that. I think that, um, I think it's wrong. And, uh, so I wanted to know if the council felt the same way. I mean, if these folks have a barn on their farm, I was told that, I asked the, the same question, it's unsafe. Well, unsafe to who? Unsafe to a trespasser? Yeah, that's right, unsafe to a trespasser. Well, that's ludicrous. That's absolutely absurd. So, I, I don't, and so you guys, you, you guys had some issues, you had to clean up some stuff, which you pretty much agree to that.
We have, yeah, we worked on...
The first picture there, if you wanna show what you had there.
This one or that one?
That one there, that's all down and cleaned up.
That was a barn that fell down this past winter with the snow.
Well, it wasn't even, it was a machine shift, is what it was.
Yeah, tractors, what you see on a farm.
And that's been all cleaned up. Uh, there's another old garage that was partially fallen down, you know, I, let's be honest, the buildings on this place are not in good shape. But, the barn, which is not that, there, right there, we still use that, his cows still go in there. Um, you know, I mean, cattle are fairly high right now, I mean, if we thought that it was in the condition where it was gonna hurt them cattle, we would, we'd fence it off to where they couldn't get in there.
We just pinned calves up in it just two Sundays ago. I mean, we use it, we have cattle in there every day, we have waters in there, we have hay stored in there. It's not the greatest, but it was built in eighteen seventy-two. I don't, you know, I know it's not...
And then you got the, you got the hoop barns, you got the hoop barns on there?
Yeah, the three hoop buildings, they were also in violation.
They were told that they gotta take them down.
There's no permit for that, just no permit. There's no permit, they just need to obtain permits.
Were you...
Well, we had a different letter, didn't you have a letter that said we had to tear them down, right?
I get the letter.
It doesn't say, yeah, it says you gotta get them down.
Tear them down.
It doesn't say with a permit.
Yeah.
When did they go up? How long did they...
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
You didn't have to have a permit for agriculture.
No, and they're temporary structures too, they're insured, everything, I mean, they're not, they're temporary insured structures.
They were built nineteen ninety-five. I had them insured with Finesse Mudgeal out of Warren County, and I had, previous to that, I had them insured with State Farm, and they, they didn't have no problem, so I, I don't...
So, Art, wait a minute, let me, let me direct if I could for just a minute.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did we send them a letter saying they had to tear them down? No. Yes or no? It's my understa, well, let me look.
Well, I'll read you the letter.
Because Art's supposed, should be, it's my understanding, it was just a permit. Go ahead and read the letter if you would.
Okay. Three membrane, membrane-type structures on the property in violation of Chapter 31 of the International Building Code of St. Charles County as adopted by Section 500.010. Ordinances of St. Charles County OSCC Mo, remove structures from the property within 10 days of the date of this notice. A permit may be required. Contact the St. Charles County Building Division 949-7345 for more information.
Are we saying that's a permit required to keep them or a permit required to take them down? The one I'm looking at, the notice here. Wayne, is that your department?
Yes.
Is that permit that they're talking about to keep the build, to enable them to stay there or a permit to take the building down?
Either way, they could've got a building permit.
They need a permit to take down a membrane building, temporary building?
It's a structure, it requires a building permit.
Why would you need a building permit if it's put up in 1995, before this was even a charter county? Why, I mean?
1993. We became a charter county in 1993.
Yeah, in 1996.
Can I clarify? Because Joe's right, but he's got his day a little bit wrong. Before we were a charter county, we were under the state statutes for zoning. And under the state statute, there is an agricultural exemption, okay? Under our zoning, our power to zone comes directly to the Constitution. Our UDO has no exemption in it. Now, you know, if you want to put one in there, we can, we can discuss that. But there's, there's no, there's no agricultural-
Around St. Paul where I live, I mean, there's, there's every farm under those, you got a pole barn and they put them up without permits. And they did back in them days when these guys built theirs, and they're still doing that. That thing doesn't look any different to me than the structure that we store salt in for cattle.
Same thing, we hold that, and he said they're all over the county.
Same way, was this initiated by a neighbor's complaint or is this another one of them drive-through things, drive-by's?
This is part of a sweep, a sweep of whole block road, or I guess it was just a hamper road.
Well, let's, I'll be more than happy to get the permits. That won't be a problem.
Well, I don't, that's a whole nother, I don't even-
And they know someone-
Here's the thing, Art, let me ask you another question.
The policy of the law.
Joanne has-
Mr. Schwedie, can I ask you what the date of the letters you're looking at? Because I have a letter from the department that says, remove the structures or apply for a building permit on the three membrane structures.
That was the first one we got. Then the second one we got was-
March 26.
March 26, 2015.
What was the date of the first letter?
March 24, 2015.
See, the March 26 letter that I have says, remove or apply. So, the March 26 letter that I have-
That's the one he read-
Says, remove structures or apply.
Topographical error.
I'll be more than happy to get the-
No, I just, that's why I was asking.
I don't know if it's so.
Okay, hold on, guys. Any other questions about the pole barn, the hay, the round things? I mean, I don't think that, I don't, I don't agree with the county writing them up on agricultural, they're not inhabited structures. They got equipment in there and hay.
Let me ask you one more thing here. Okay. Wooden fencing-
Danny, I'll get to that.
Okay, all right.
He was just asking about the-
Okay, okay, so now the next thing, Art, you go through, go through it, Jacob.
Number two, we got a wooden barn missing and/or broken wood.
Right, right. And that's the old barn that we, he just had pictures of. And we, the ones that were deteriorating roofing and are broken, we cleaned all those up. They did. They fell down this past winter with the snow.
Okay, so the wooden barn missing wood, have anybody seen the new barns they're building in the county park? They built them with missing wood. So, it looks natural, but, okay. I took pictures of it, just-
Yeah, this, this is the number two. This is number two on our list, was this one.
Number two is referring to that barn?
Yes, yes. The wooden barn, missing boards, broken boards, deteriorated roofing, deteriorated and a broken structural framing members and is leaning in violation of Chapter 23 of the International Building Code of St. Charles County as adopted by Section 500.01. Orders of St. Charles County is a repair or remove structures from the property within 10 days of the date of this notice.
Okay.
Wayne, do we require people to get a permit to fix missing boards and whatnot? I'm trying to figure out when we need a permit to do this, when we're gonna, when we don't.
Well, why is it any of the county's business on going out to somebody's barn that's built in 1800 and that's part of rural America? You can't make people fix them old barns and structures. You'd be condemning, you'd condemn 300 or 400 of them in St. Charles County. It doesn't make any sense.
It's a general note down there, Mike. It says, a permit may be required to contact and check, see what type of work-
Just to replace, you know, just like a siding on a house.
Are you-
Do you see the, I think the letters are a little vague though, about what, what we're telling people they need to do and what they don't need to do. And I know it makes it a lot easier to have one form letter that goes out, but on the receiving end, it's hard to, when you get that letter, to know what is it that the county wants us to do? Is it required to get a permit to do this or not? That letter, to me, just spurs more questions. It doesn't, it doesn't answer and it doesn't tell the property owners what they need to do.
Okay, go on, Jacob.
Number three, which is wooden barn, lean to partially collapse, missing boards, broken boards, deteriorated, missing roof, deteriorated and broken structural framing members and is leaning. And then the rest is, you know, remove or repair or remove, structure from the property, permit may be required. Contact St. Charles County Building Division. And that was the one that we had cleaned up that fell this past winter with the snow and we just never had a chance to get it cleaned up. But we got that all cleaned up. There's two of them that totally fell down, heavy snow and they collapsed. But we did get all those picked up. That's, that's all gone now, so.
Okay, Art, my question to you is, for a question, is that barn, in the middle of their 100 acres, whatever they got, who is it unsafe to? Why, why is that a concern of the counties?
Well, under the county's property maintenance code, it is up to discretion, I guess, of the inspector to say, is that a safe structure or not? Is it deteriorated? And does it meet the property maintenance code? And the answer was, no, it does not. So, the inspector wrote it up. Now, if the council wants to change how things are handled in different areas, similar like what you've done with Lefflin, I guess that's completely up to the council. Joe, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take an opposing viewpoint, just because, you know, I like to have good discussions. But the whole point of having building codes though, is to make sure that people don't get hurt in them. You could say the same thing about, you know, a house across the street here on Third Street. You know, who's it unsafe to other than the people that live there? Well, if we have unsafe structures that are out there and, and by your, by what you just told me, two of them fell down because it had snow on the roof, okay, it could've, it could've fallen on, on one of you three gentlemen also. So, you know, is it the, is it the county's responsibility or is it something we should be doing to go out there and, and remind people to take down buildings that are about to fall down?
Are you gonna check every building in the county, though? Why not? I don't, I don't like just to sweep.
I think that's a good point.
You know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna yell at us, you better yell at every person in this county. Not just, you can't nick and pick and choose people. How is that fair?
I think that, I think though, that you have the neighborhood preservation, I think that agriculture should be excluded. Because you got these farms that's been running their business out there for 100 years or whatnot. And you say unsafe barn. Well, if unsafe to them, it's their decision. I mean, it's their barn.
I absolutely would not let those cows even enter the facility, the premises, if that was the case.
Right. And to say it's unsafe to a trespasser, that's absurd. That's what I was told. And that just makes no sense.
I agree with y'all now.
So, if they, if they choose to have an unsafe structure, a barn, it's been there for 200 and something years or whatever, that's their choice. And that's where the ordinance, I think we have to get clarified. Because this, you have no idea how many complaints I'd be getting on this neighborhood preservation sweep. And I think that it's just a huge infringement on property rights.
Usually sweeps are the result of a number of complaints that we've gotten from people in the neighborhood or wherever they come from. And because of that, we start doing sweeps when the, we just continually get these complaints about things.
So, they come from Ladue and drive off to the wineries and they see these?
And I think in some cases where we get the rub is when an area is starting to urbanize and you're getting development occurring. And they don't think that a property, even with a deteriorating barn, is that beneficial to their property values.
But see, Wayne, that may be fine, but that, that may be fine, but in the real world, those people who, if you're speaking to the people who are building five-acre lots or subdivisions or whatnot, they moved out there knowing the expectations where they were moving. And those farmers and agriculture people were there first. So, you can't expect them to adapt to their way of life. That's not right.
I understand, the way our code is set up, we're saying they do have to adapt. If the county thinks that there's a different way that we should regulate-
Well, that's why we're having this meeting, because I think that we have some serious problems.
So, basically, agriculture's gonna be out as we know it then, if we was to keep on things the way they are?
They don't like our cows.
Hold on, Alan.
No, no.
Hold on, guys.
I got you the opposite.
Hold on, guys, just come on.
We have to adapt to their-
No, we're gonna see about changing.
That's what he was talking about, changing.
Hey, Alan, that's why we're having this meeting. Yeah, let me run it. Go ahead, David.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to visit the property maintenance code. And these, this, the agricultural property needs to be dealt with separately. I mean, this barn is for, you know, cows to get out of the rain and for them to store some hay and stuff. And we need, we need to address that in an ordinance change. And I would be supportive of that.
Okay.
Get some exemption for agricultural properties.
Another thing is, I agree with you. You folks were there before the subdivisions, before the wineries and all that. And you know what? Even if that barn, the way it looks the way it is there, okay, that's your barn and your family member come from that barn. And nobody should tell you to tear that barn.
Right, and that was, that was my big statement.
That's in the middle of 100 acres of that. That's in the 100 acres of your family farm and has sentimental value to you because your great-grandfather or whatever built it. Then you know what? That's something maybe you work on a little bit in the wintertime, you do a little bit better, you do what you want to do with it. But it's yours, that shouldn't be something to tear down. That's got historic value to it.
Right, right.
In fact, probably a lot of family value to you folks.
Yeah, I mean, we've all been raised there, the whole family. I mean, Schwedie Road's out there and it's, we've been there a long time, you know.
I got one more comment, too. For those people that are worried about, and that's the beginning paragraph here, about the safety of it, wouldn't their efforts be a lot more productive if they were geared to what's going on right now? They want to, I think, I'm pretty sure I heard something about it, they want to repeal the helmet law on motorcycles. And they want to raise the speed limit up to 75 on interstates. Now, if you would gear your concerns, you could save a lot more lives in that respect than the number of people that's gonna get caved in by this barn falling down.
Can I ask you, the 12,000 pound weight limit, I saw that on your letter. They telling you gotta move your grain truck? I saw that in one of the letters.
It wasn't, it wasn't a grain truck. It was a, buddy of mine had just, he parks, he parked his, um-
Wine, wine.
It's a wine wagon.
Can you not store a vehicle with more than 12,000 pound capacity on agricultural ground?
No, that's not the issue. It's a commercial vehicle.
It's not, it's not used though.
Those are not, that's not-
Most farmers I know have grain trucks.
Those are not farm equipment.
Okay.
That's correct.
Neither is that.
But those weren't in use. They're not commercial. They don't even run. They were just parked. I mean, they run, but he doesn't use them. He was moving them and they were parked there.
But they are gone.
They're gone, they're gone now.
That wouldn't apply to a grain truck.
No.
Okay. Thank you for your time. All right, guys, thank you. It's all, you know, we got one more guy who wanted to talk. I don't know, Bob Schiller, did you want to say anything? Or anybody, Peterman's or anybody? It's all, it's gonna be the same stuff, but, I mean.
He'll move. My complaint is, we have an old farmhouse built back in the 50s. And they suggest that we got fading and flaking paint on it. It's steel siding. There's no way that it would be a problem for people. We will paint it, but I was, it took six days to get the damn notice to me. And I got a 30-day notice to get it done. Now, how do you figure I'm gonna get it done in 30 days?
What is it? The other say something about a $1,000 day fine or something like that?
Yeah.
And I want to-
What I want to know is who in here decides? Is this gentleman here?
Well, that's why we're having this meeting, because-
Because I think we ought to get his lawyers and get him fired if, if that's what he's gonna do, is harass him.
So, anyway, Bob, you called me and you were the third guy to call me that day and I couldn't believe it. I'm like, oh my God, I'm getting all these calls. So, that's why we're having the meeting. I think there's some inconsistencies. I think there's some problems. You guys had that. That's a farm you've had for a long time in your family.
My parents bought it in '52.
Yeah. And so, they wrote up the woodpecker holes and a bunch of stuff you told me? I mean-
They had on a letter that we had a carport and we don't even have a carport.
And, I mean, I, I just, I guess the point is, we gotta decide if, you know, when you're, you're not in the neighborhood, you're not in subdivision, you got 100-something acres, you know?
It's agriculture.
Just the procedure here, 30 days or a $1,000 day fine, that's, you know, here's the thing, is the people are not supposed to be afraid of the government. The government should be afraid of the people. And the problem with what's going on here is that. I mean, because a lot of people from out my wares, like, I ain't coming in there, I don't want to get a tuppie at Target. That's terrible. I mean, it's terrible that we're, people are afraid of St. Charles County.
Well, I guarantee, if this proceeds or if, if things get rougher, we will get together and we will get, we'll lawyer up and see if we can't get a few of these idiots fired. Because it's way out of hand.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, do you want to add questions for Mr. Schiller?
I want to ask Art about this case.
Does anybody live there?
I don't know. I'm just looking at the notes from the inspector. It doesn't state, it says peeling and faded paint on the house and the garage.
Okay.
They took pictures from the road.
Yes, I see the pictures. It also states, though, you may request an informal review. Did you contact your inspector for an extension or even talk to the inspector?
I called to find out what they was talking about.
Okay.
Because we didn't have carport.
You asked for additional time? Because what you'll find is in the painting, like, this is an initial notice. I don't see where you've ever had a case before. We'll have painting cases go for almost a year where we grant extensions.
That's not in this letter.
The letter is a standard form letter which identifies exactly what's in the ordinances, including the penalty provisions. Those are standard form letters. That's why there's also an appeal provision put in there. It says, you may request an informal review of determination of the division or director of neighborhood preservation. So, if there's ever an issue, you can always contact me as well, not just deal with the inspector. There's also a formal appeal that's also written in there.
Well, you keep saying you may issue permits and you may do this and you may do that.
Well, may be required. You have to put it in there to say if, you don't want to come back later down the road and say, oh, by the way, now you need a permit.
All right, let me ask you this. If we were to paint it, you're gonna come back out there and say, well, that's a fine job? Or are you gonna nitpick other things?
I'd hope our inspector said he did a good job and then closed the case and thank you.
Art, just to follow up on that, okay. The first, first letter is designed to get a contact and get a discussion going, correct?
Well, I think you-
And you can, you can get extensions?
Yes.
At what point you said it would probably be a year?
We have paint cases, we have cases that have been on, where I put people on a program. It's, they've got so much stuff to take care of, they might be given, okay, can you get this done in 30, 60 days, then we'll go to the next violation. And we work out a timeframe with them. Worked it out with several people. In this case also, you have to look at, the inspector just doesn't go out there. They go out, when they go out to the properties, they will leave a card on the door. And we've gotten to the point where they're actually taking pictures where they left the card on the door to try to make contact with the owners.
We never have seen a card.
Well, I don't know if there's that. I don't know. I can tell you what the policy procedure is.
My question is, what, what's the next step to, because before anything would ever happen, we'd have to actually file a case in court, right?
Yes, but you wouldn't file a case in court.
At that point, the, you know, the judge, we would have to convince the judge.
It doesn't go to, it never goes to court, Steve. They, they do these condemnation hearings. He holds the hearings.
If they don't do anything, it would go to-
Those are the judge and juries right there.
No, this is just a paint violation.
This is a paint violation.
Oh, I know, but it's compile, it's problematic because it's compiling, it's-
But see, I think this is an important thing and I hope that you understand. I think there's, there's good points to be made about an agricultural exemption, okay? But see, Art's problem is, this farmhouse, even though it's a farmhouse, comes under the same code as every other house in St. Charles County. So, even I think under an agricultural exemption in a non-charter county, the house would still be subject to, the rest of the farm would-
30 days? And it took six days to get the letter to me?
No, and that's-
I think they ought to change their form if, if they're lying.
Okay, but what he's saying is that they would've given you more time.
They may. You keep throwing that may.
I wouldn't jump to conclusion.
Carol, are we, do I have to make a motion since we have a forum now to have, go back to official business or is that understood?
And I would have to double check with Carol because at the beginning of the meeting, he didn't have a forum, so I just mentioned that.
Well, before we-
In a work session, you don't make formal decisions. You can make a consensus, but you can't make a formal ruling or anything in a work session.
Well, I, I would like to make a, however you call it, I would like to, I would say that all of the violations that we wrote on agricultural properties at this point be put on hold until we figure out what we're gonna do. I think we need to rewrite the ordinances. I think we need to revisit them. I think we need to revisit procedures. I think that, I don't think Art should be running the condemnation hearings or however you want to do it. It should be a separate, it should be citizens. I don't even know why we're doing it, but I, I mean, I, I think that things need to change. I think they're way out of control. I think that it's just not good the way we're doing it. And so, I would like to make a motion. Or do I need a motion or?
You can't make a motion.
You can't do that.
You can't do a work session.
It's a work session.
I can do a consensus of it.
There are thoughts on it today.
Well, I'm asking the council if we have a consensus to do, in administration, I hope you'd agree with me, that we just, if at this point right now, stop all of the violations we wrote on agricultural ground until we figure out if there's something we can do to be a little more reasonable. Because I don't think we've been reasonable at all. That's, that's what the consensus I'd like to get. Joe?
Mr. Chairman, let's, let's just, we will, we will agree not to go far with any kind of court actions or prosecutions on these things until you've-
I mean, I'm talking about administratively stopping law. Right now, until we figure out-
And not even tell people that they're in violation?
No, send out letters and say, you're, you're, we're putting it on hold until we figure out what we're gonna do. Because it's, it's gonna be left up to Art for discretion of which ones are valid or not. And I don't, I'm not gonna agree with that.
Art's gonna have discretion, whatever you write. That's why you need to write a good statute that limits his discretion. Let me just, you know, let me just say that, you know, I, I don't, I don't think people should blame Art because the council in the past has never deemed it necessary to do an agricultural exemption. because the council in the past has never deemed it necessary to do an agricultural exemption.
We've never had these problems before, Steve.
Right. I, I, I was dealing with agricultural exemptions for the farmers in the Levy District down there 20 years ago. And that was one of our problems. Once the county became a first-class charter county, those, those exemptions didn't, didn't apply anymore. So I don't, it's not a new issue for me, but that's, that's, that's fine. I think that if I could just sum up, one of, some of the good things that have come out of this is the word condemnation is really, I think that's a good point, Dave. The word condemnation is the wrong word because people hear condemnation, they think the government's gonna take their property for its own use. So I, I would, and I don't know if we can do that administratively or not, but I think we need to replace the word condemnation with unhappable.
I, I, I think we need to go back and, and look at the code and make those changes.
Right, right. Now, the other thing, and this is, I, I kept hearing all this stuff about people going on property. Joanne, would you explain the, the whole concept of the curd ledge and what we can and can't do? And it's my understanding, we've never gone in anybody's property without a warrant, but we can go on the property in certain cases.
When the inspectors go, and Drew's here, he works with them regularly as their attorney, they go up the curd ledge. They can go, for instance, where a mailman would go to deliver mail. They can go up the driveway. They can go up a walk to a front door.
Well, how do you go into someone's barn and clean it out without a warrant?
Can I just explain for a moment? And that, you're gonna have to get the particulars of what the notices were on that. But we're talking about when the inspectors go to inspect the property. Often when things are complaint-based, the neighbors will invite the inspectors who have made the complaints to go on to the property of the person who made the complaint to get a view of a backyard or a side yard or something that may not be visible from the street. So beyond that, you know, you are looking at situations like you're talking about where there's been notices delivered and determinations have been made of violation and there's cleanups made under the authority of the ordinances that you all have passed.
I'd like a consensus of the council if we're gonna get one. Yeah, Joe?
Was this a complaint-based or basis of a sweep? And I-
It's on both roads, same road.
Okay.
So it's safe road, safe sweep.
When I was an alderman in St. Paul, we had a very similar situation when county was doing our enforcement, okay? And they were doing the drive-bys and sweeps, okay? And it was causing us all kinds of problems. And St. Paul's a lot like, a lot of these folks' area. You got some subdivisions, but you got some farm families been there forever, okay? And right, since we were contracting with St., St. Charles County for doing our code enforcement, we said right then and there, we don't want any more sweeps, drive-bys. We want it only done by complaint basis. So then when, so neighbor- If the neighbor's worried about somebody's barn falling on their fence or their house or the, the barn metal blowing off and not going through picture window, they got a right to complain and, and maybe an investigation needs to, to go. We took it one step further and when there was a complaint, before we turned that in as city government, before we turned that into county to do the enforcement, we would send that off to the aldermen and make a call, okay? And the aldermen would actually call, I'd call, citizens of St. Paul and say, you know, we got a little problem. You get, the neighbor complained about something on your property. You know, there's three junk cars in your backyard. Can you get that taken care of? And, well, yeah, what do I say? Can you get it done within, you know, a month or two? Oh, yeah, that's fine. And then I'd call the resident to complain and say, give it a month or two. Give the guy the time to get it out of there. If not, call back and we'll, we'll go further. And I tell you, that took care of 99-point-something percent of the problems and didn't create an undue burden. I'm not a big fan of having government people driving around through neighborhoods looking. I remember one I saw a few years back when I first started with county about some guy that left his, probably went on the fishing trip and left his beer cooler on the front porch. And he got a ticket for having a beer cooler on the front porch. I mean, this is still St. Charles County. It's where I grew up and it's a rural area. And I know we got subdivisions, but we shouldn't be driving around rural areas looking for barns that got a missing board or a fence panel that's fallen over or something.
Hold on, Steve. The only, the only thing to that, Joe, is I, I agree what you're saying is an improvement, but it still concerns me if it's complaint-driven because number one, has there really been a complaint? Number two, what if you get some subdivision that moves in and the farmer's been there 100 years and they're complaining about the farmer? Is the county gonna still write it up?
We hadn't seen that in St. Paul because most of the people that bought them houses in subdivision like looking out over that farm. They bought that for a reason. They liked it.
But I think we can all agree, though, that we need to do something about the way this is being done.
Yeah, but you've heard me say this before. You cannot codify everything. You can't put every conceivable thing in a book of codes. You can't do it. And you've gotta have some discretion, some common sense with dealing with this stuff. I mean, you know, like the, the Swaydy family, been there for a zillion years and I don't know how many acres they got. You can't be telling them they gotta tear down the family, Paul. Barn? I mean, that's-
It's crazy.
It's, and I don't know. I mean, and I understand where some of you guys may have trouble if you live in, if you're, you live in a subdivision and you're, and you're not from this county, but if you grew up like I did in rural areas of the county. I mean, this kinda stuff, you're thinking, really? Are we doing this? And, you know, I'd, I'd have a hard time comprehending some of this.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, can I ask, can I just, that's a good point, Mr. Cronin. And let me ask you, what percentage of our cases are handled and settled exactly like that?
Oh, there's a large majority. I'm sorry, I didn't bring you numbers. Stats. It's in your, it's in your annual report.
What do you think?
I don't, I don't wanna shoot a number from the hip, but I can give you, it's in your annual report. Once a year, we give you a full report.
Is it 90%?
What, what, what was the question?
What percentage of the cases that start with a complaint are settled exactly like Mr. Cronin suggested? Where you go out there, you work with the people, you give them extra time. You don't, you end up, you end up, you don't have to go to court.
My guess is it's probably somewhere between 85 to 90% of cases.
I think there's also, you mentioned the municipality. Our municipal contracts are handled differently also. We don't, that, the municipal contract, the complaint has to come from the city official. It has to come from either the clerk or whoever their designated person. That's part of the contract. So we don't even go out and do sweeps in St. Paul. And they'll contact us and say they want a sweep. We do not initiate anything in the municipalities.
You don't do sweeps because they told you they didn't want you out there?
We had them for a while, years back, and it was nothing but this.
They requested sweeps. And I had municipalities request sweeps. And they contact me directly and they say, we want you to sweep this area.
Mr. Cronin was a, a goner in there.
Well, I'm just telling you, from my conversations with the city official, they have a contract. They have a designated person and it gets filtered to me and they send me an email and we log it in. And we say, okay, what do you want done? And we handle it. And if they say, we don't want this case handled any further, then we close that case out. They actually dictate how we handle the cases.
Well, I would like to make an informal motion or whatever that we hold all, any, all and any complaint that's been written up to date on hold until we, we can keep the file open, but we hold them until we know what direction we're gonna go in because this is just not, it's not the way I want Art County to treat people.
Joe, if I could, there, on, on the information that we've gotten today from these examples, I would absolutely agree with you. But I'm concerned about the ones that we don't know about that are-
I'm saying agriculture because it's, I do believe it's different in a residential neighborhood if you're living right next door to someone or a building's falling on a street in St. Charles or something like that. That's, that's on 12 acres or 10 acres.
Well, and we have one that's five, five feet off the road by, by their admission.
That's a, that's a very agricultural area, though. But, but that's-
Okay. That-
Yeah, I, I think your point is you, you want us to hold off on these cases we've talked about today.
All of them in agriculture until we know what direction we're gonna go with because I don't agree with hardly any of it.
Well, what if there's some egregious case out there that you haven't heard about yet? You want us just to ignore it?
For now, yeah.
Well, I mean, if it's, if it's a life safety issue, that's one thing.
But see, that life safety thing is overextended. I mean, it's like, oh, it's a safety, it's for the children.
You know, you write it, we enforce it.
Well, I don't know if we ever read ordinances. That's what I, I still don't know where the ordinances are that we approve this kind of authority.
Well, are you saying that he's gone beyond the ordinance and doing things?
I think it's discretionary. I don't, I don't think that we-
Well, if it's discretionary, he has the right to discretion.
Not to condemn barns and stuff like that. That would've never been, I would've never agreed to that. I, but, I mean, the, the codification was 600 pages or whatever it was when we did the UDO changes. And this stuff, we never did this stuff until a, not even six months ago is when we started writing up farms. We never did that before, before, ever. I've been on this council almost 16 years. We never condemned barns and houses and things like that. It's just wrong.
But it's not against the ordinance.
Well, it should be.
Well, then why don't you, why don't you make it against you?
I'm going to. That's what I'm saying. That's why I-
But you've been here longer than anybody else.
And that's what I'm saying. That's why I, look, Steve, I asked for this information Monday. I got it today. Here it is. I'm supposed to read that?
You don't ask for any information, Joe. That's not true.
Monday, Joanne.
You told me that these, I said, what is going on? Why did you, because we got no information whatsoever when you scheduled this. Nothing. Nada. And I asked you what was going on. I said, you said, let me give you some examples. And you threw them out and I wrote them down and I said, let me get the records to this stuff. And I called you Friday and said, we've got the records. We're gonna put together a summary. We couldn't ship it out because the Cottrell file alone is too large.
Oh, Marcia, you, she's a farmer. You got, you wanna add something? Mike, Mike pointed out this.
She's had it and it's been for a long time.
She's got a family farm on Schlesberg.
Right. My name is Marcia Bear. I'm a lifelong resident of southwest St. Charles County, Defiance Augusta. We've, we've been talking about where these laws originated and I've been doing research on the county's website. And I'd just like to mention, I have found the St. Charles County Master Plan envisioned 2025 that was approved by the council July 10th of 2013. This is an 80-page document which states at the beginning that it was developed by, quote, "focus groups and other invited community participants," unquote. Nowhere are these focus groups, are these participants named, and these people are not our elected officials. And then I found, we've talked about the International Property Maintenance Code adopted by the county in 2009. My question is, why does our county have international building codes? I contacted the members of the council via email in 2014 and with my concerns about this master plan and the invasion or encroachment on individual property rights. Councilman Cronin replied and he said, quote, "Without a master plan, much of planning and zoning is unenforceable," unquote. And I have the email. A 2012 amendment to this master plan designates the Defiance area along Highway 94 an agritourism land use area. Page five of that amendment states, quote, "A setback of one-half the depth of the property will facilitate an open field and preserve vistas. This setback will provide ample room to develop the parcel," unquote. So Councilman Cronin, according to what you said, this-
I was on plan and zoning at the time. Let me just tell you, I was on the master plan committee if you wanna know.
Right.
A master plan is just, just a pie in the sky of how we're gonna, the county should develop down the road. Nothing is binding. But the reason you have to have a master plan is because if someone wishes to locate a subdivision within the county, they need to go to an area that's earmarked for subdivisions, not in a, an area that's designated for wineries on your area or bean fields in my area. So I think people read a lot more into that master plan, but when I was a municipal official, we were told, and this, Wayne would probably know more about this than I do, maybe Dave as well. You have to have a master plan for orderly planning and part of the planning is what planning and zoning does.
But helping with the, the unelected officials who wrote this master plan and the international property maintenance codes which we are following and the plan that will allow this setback, which allows the county to take one-half of the property depth for scenic vistas.
No, they're not doing that. No, we're not doing that.
But it's in the plan.
I don't, I don't think so, Marcia.
It's, it's in the plan. I brought the papers. You can read it.
It might be a recommendation, but we never did that.
It's your AT district, Joe.
Yeah, but we don't do vistas. We don't, we don't-
We don't do vistas. What we're doing with, and just so she knows, we're permitting in that zone district commercial uses within an agricultural zone. And there were some requirements set up for that district if you wanted to put a commercial use there that would try to maintain the rural character of the area, but still allow this commercial use, like a hotel, a dinner theater or whatever we have.
No, I understand that. I think, Marcia, I think that the thing is our-
Help me with the international property maintenance codes.
We've got an expert on that.
Dave was on the building commissioner, but I, I don't, I think-
That aren't available at the county or on the website because of copyrights stated in the document. Only at the libraries in the county couldn we view these codes.
Okay. Let me explain that. All the, all the building codes that the county uses along with the property maintenance code are published nationally by the international codes, the ICC. The, the county has had a property maintenance code since 1992 and it's evolved. Every time there's a new addition, and I think the county probably does it every second edition, so like every six years, they'll update those codes. Now, they should be available in all public libraries because I know at one time, we, we sent them books. Or you can come down to the office and I'm sure they'll let you look at those codes.
Is that where these actions are coming from?
I don't think I think so.
Those international codes?
The zoning, it, don't get zoning and, and the master plan confused with the property maintenance code or the building codes. Those are all separate.
But I do think what we need to discuss, guys-
They're all these documents. They're all in the same document.
Every city, every fire district uses those same sort of codes in this county that I'm aware of.
Right.
And just to clarify one thing, you're absolutely, your facts are absolutely correct. There are committees, there are non-elected officials, and there's some elected, well, you are a non-elected official at the time. But whatever they recommend, it basically comes to our office, to Wayne and, and all of us. And then we recommend something to the council. And when we recommend it to the council, there's a public hearing. So anybody can come and say, hey, we like this, we don't like that. And I think under the charter, we've gotta, we've gotta, we've gotta redo that every, every five years. So there'll be an opportunity here in the next few years and, and, you know, maybe we need to redo the whole master plan and provide greater, you know, freedom for property owners to do what they want to with their property. That's, that's the issue these folks have to deal with all the time. Striking that balance between, you know, safety and property values and everything else on the one hand and freedom on the other. And it's obvious that you think they, they missed the balance here on regard to agriculture.
Kind of.
But I can only tell you, it's, it's, it's a tough job. And I'm sure they'll, they'll continue to, 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 to give it their 100% effort to get it right.
Well, okay, I, I do agree. Chair, go ahead.
Yeah, one thing about the, the master plan, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, it's just a overall overview. Individual decisions have to be made by us on an individual basis, okay? So no matter what the master plan says, each individual case, zoning, whatever, still comes before us. We still consider that individual case against, maybe it might go against what the, the master plan says. Then again, somebody else says, well, you know, you wanna follow. But still taking on an individual basis, though.
Master plan's a guide. It's not, it's not an adopted law.
The whole setback issue did not designate a difference between individual private property, selling your home or commercial development.
I think what we need to do, I think what I would like to recommend that we do is whoever, if Joe or whoever's in the rural districts wanna get together, well, I don't wanna, I hate saying committee, but we'll get together and, and meet with Wayne and Art and whoever and come up with a solution. I'm, my, my idea is to pretty much exclude agriculture from this neighborhood preservation department except for maybe tires and junk cars and stuff like that, but pretty much just exclude it.
Thank you, Joe.
That would be my point. But at this point right now, is that something that the council thinks that that makes sense or? Joe?
They have one standard subdivision and for-
I mean, I've had a few instances like this come up in my district and people complain to me and I usually call, talk to Wayne and we worked it out, okay? And so when you're saying 90% of the cases get worked out, I think in my district, that's probably true maybe better. We're not having the same problems we're having. But I do got a problem. If you did a sweep in St. Paul, okay, in that surrounding area, you're gonna find same kind of lot of these agricultural, you know, you know, issues that you see here. And I do agree with the other man, with the, one man's junk is another man's treasure. If you come around my barns, I got some stuff that my wife calls junk, but I think is a treasure. You know, so it's, it's the same thing. So I, I think you gotta use, I think the only solution is discretion in this stuff. And, you know, if a neighbor's got worried about the, the barn metal flying off and killing his kids in the backyard, that's a legitimate thing, but if it's a barn in the middle of a 100-acre field, it's not causing a problem. I think it's different. And I don't think we can write that and, we can try all we want. We ain't gonna write that in the code. I think that's gonna be up to your, your guys and, you know, and I think you're hearing loud and clear from these folks today. from these folks today. So how do, you know, how do we get that done? Do we want to spend hours and hours of legal time figuring it out, or we just want to tell, you know, I, I would say, in my district, if we have a problem like that, you call me. I, I do, I did this with an alderman. I do a drive-by. If I think there's a problem, then I call you.
Hold on. All right, go ahead, Mike.
There's a, Art's got one set of rules that apply across the board, and I think that, and that allows a lot of the problems, agriculture areas, the, in my area, we have a lot of clubhouses down on the, on the riverfront. Completely different set of standards as compared to some of the, of the, I'll call them modern subdivisions, for lack of a better term. You can't have 12-inch grass growing in a subdivision, but down on the riverfront, nothing wrong with it. In fact, you know, if it's only 12 inches, it'd be the best one down there. It is, you know, you can't, you know, we don't, we don't expect to have boats parked in your, in your front yard if you live, you know, on, you know, off the Drossy Street. But if you live, you know, down on the south shore someplace, and you have a boat in your front yard, well, you match everybody else. So we've got to find a way that it's flexible enough that we have a certain amount of, of what fits that particular neighborhood, what fits that area. And I think what we're running into is, is that we're getting, as the, as the county continues to get more and more built out, I mean, one of the sets of pictures that, that came about, you know, there's, there's a rusty lamppost and a new subdivision in the, in the background. So where we have, where we're going to have conflict is where the new stuff starts mixing in with the old stuff. And that, you know, how do we, how do we write laws and, and maintenance code that defines that? It is extraordinarily difficult. I think Art and your, your guys need to have a little bit more flexibility about what fits in that particular neighborhood. And I think that from the, the evidence that we heard today, it's, we're, we're leaning too far to, too much code enforcement. I also absolutely believe that the letters that we're sending out need revision. They're, they're talking about fees, fines, and condemnation.
In 30 days.
In 30 days from, thank you, from, from the first initiation of, of things. And that, that I think we're hitting them with a club when we, when we need to point out that what the violation is, let's get this cleaned up. We'll come back out in 30 days to do a reinspection or contact us. Because we do, we also have to have timelines, and that, we're all, I mean, a big percentage of the, of the world is procrastinators. If, if you get something that just says, get to it sometime, well, sometime turns into six months. And that's not fair to surrounding property owners that, that are looking for something to happen either. So I, I think that, I don't think that, that I'm ready to say absolutely no code enforcement anywhere. Agricultural areas, yeah, I think we, we've gone too far. The barn is, is a classic example. There's nothing wrong with that barn. I mean, they're, they're all over St. Charles County. We have, you know, we, we, in some areas, we don't let people tear them down. Houses that are in worse shape than that, because we deem them to be historically significant. So we, we just got to find, and, and I hate to use this term, but kind of common sense, kind of, you know, let's, let's, and that's a bad term to use, I just can't think of a better one right now, but something that just says, okay, what's appropriate for that particular area. And it's going to be difficult, because the county is changing. So I, I, I think that we have a lot of work that we need to do on the letters that we send out. If I was a recipient of some of those, I wouldn't know what to do either, and I've been around this for 20 years. It is vague. It is, and when you cite too many different code numbers, you know, it just, the recipient of that letter doesn't know what we're trying to say. And that's, that's what I think we need to work on.
Do you guys any conclusion? Dave, you got something you want to add?
Yeah, I, I agree with, I agree with, with you, Joe. I think we need to address this. I have some ideas that I'd like to put in writing and, and let you all take a look at it, as far as some of these things we talked about today. I think, I think we can, to make some ordinance changes that I think make more sense. And I'd like to at least put something together to help you guys.
I guess what we'll do is we'll post a meeting, we'll have it with Wayne and Art and whoever, and try to come up with some ideas. And maybe we can interject ideas first, then get together, and whoever wants to participate can participate, and we'll just try to figure something out. But what I would like to know is, do we have a consensus at this point that we're going to hold off on agricultural violations? Steve said something about safety. Is it a, I mean, if you got a reasonable way to draw a line, I don't know. But that's what got us into this spot. So do we want to have a consensus and say, let's hold all agricultural violations until we can get together and come up with a better solution?
That's a problem, is if you got a really flagrant one where there's a safety issue involved, okay? You got an anhydrous tank parked next to a subdivision, something like that. I think that they've got to have a little bit of building for that.
Well, then, I didn't even say that. Say that, and then...
Yeah. The other, so I think non-safety, we could say non-safety, and I'm okay with that part. But if it's a safety issue, we still have to have some enforcement building. The other thing I'm reading in here, you know, what one man calls tall weeds, another man calls habitat, okay? I mean, I don't mow my front yard. I live in the country. I have a woods. I've got turkey and deer in my, I like it that way. So I mean, you know, this whole thing, this county is very diverse. My, Mike's thinking about, I used to live on the Mississippi Riverbanks. It's a totally different world down there than it is in the subdivision in St. Peters, than it is in wine country or even in St. Paul, okay? It's different. That's where we're going to have an issue.
I think we could agree, 25, 50 feet around the house, probably shouldn't have weeds that are growing, or natural vegetation that's growing three or four feet tall.
I got it around my house. Don't hurt cause of...
In agriculture, right up to your house.
Who's building 25 feet of my home?
If we're talking about agricultural, not a, not a residential section.
We have homes that are in agricultural, I mean, you got houses that are sitting in the middle of an agricultural zoning.
Joe, as you know, I mean, it's your guys' job to pass the ordinance and ours to enforce it. So how about this? How about if you let us know when, what dates work for you all to meet? In the meantime, we will not proceed with prosecution on anything. I'll ask the department and the division to review anything in the agricultural area. And, and if there's something we feel we have to proceed on, we will go to the exec. If he agrees, then we'll come to the councilman for that area and let him know what we're doing.
Okay. Can, can we quit sending out letters right now that are so atrocious? And just, we're going to reform the whole letter. We're going to rewrite the letter. And then...
Okay, we have a consensus. We're running out of time, so we agree.
All right, guys. There was a very complicated meeting. Thank you for coming in. We need to try to come up with solutions, so hopefully we will. So, yes, Steve?
I'd like to compliment everyone on the way they handle themselves, and I appreciate that some people have got a little emotional about it, and we understand. And thank you for being here.
Thank you, guys.